Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. So, we're gonna start this forum by opening it up for everybody to do three minutes of introduction. From there, we'll ask the questions that we have. Each candidate will get two minutes to answer the question. If there is something said that we feel another candidate should have a chance to rebut, that'll be about a minute for that. And then we'll decide whether it needs to go back and forth. And then at the close, there'll be a three-minute close for each candidate, and then we will open it up for everybody. We expect that our questions will take about an hour and a half to an hour and forty-five minutes, and the remainder of the time will be left for questions, all depending on rebuttals. So with that, oh, when we start questions, we will rotate who starts. So with that being said, we'll start with you, Carter, and you'll get three minutes. Give me a second to start the timer.
Quick test on audio. Is this voice level okay? People in the back, up, louder? Alright, great. Thank you. I'll be the louder. Alright. Hello, good evening. My name is Carter Finnegan, and I am running for Newport City Council because I love living here. I moved here for the lake, but I am staying for the community and the people that I have met here. I think we're gonna have a lot of time to discuss the issues, but broadly, the things that I really focus and care about are growth, sustainable growth that works with the locals, and also our natural environment. I also very much prioritize the working class and our families, so maintaining our tax burden, trying to address housing shortages where we can, and also recruiting employers at the same time. All of those will build a strong economic hub for this, for our region. And then branching from that, I also hope to bring professional experience to the table regionally, learning from our other municipalities, sharing insights, and understanding the changes that the state is facing due to higher federal-level changes, but understanding that landscape funding-wise is also really critical in moving our town forward. And that surmises what I had to say.
Clark, you're next.
My name is Clark Curtis. I wanna thank the Newport Daily and NAKTV and everyone here for coming. Have been married for forty years, have three children, six grandchildren, a member of St. Mary's Church Knights of Columbus, former member and chair of the Development Review Board, Planning Commission, and Historic Preservation Commission, current member of the Northeast Kingdom International Airport Committee, obviously a current alderman, have resided here my whole life, and I have seventeen years of municipal government experience. Something that is challenging for me to address, but I need to address it, I've been accused of something regarding my business. I was unaware of the issue. Once I was aware of it, I addressed it, corrected it, and it really has nothing to do with my business. It's because of my run for reelection. We have done a lot of work on the, on the council. There's more work to do, many challenges. I've learned that no matter how hard you try, you cannot please everyone. There are different views on the council at times, and there is a lot of uniting as well. I would like to finish what I started. Two years goes by really quickly. We're probably gonna have a new mayor. Work forward to working with him, and continuing the work that I don't think is completed yet. That's it. Thank you.
Alright. Carl.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. I'm Carl King. I've been here thirty-two years. I do things in the community. I help a lot of people who are unfortunate get to their groceries, get to doctor's appointments, so on, so forth. I work with other nonprofit groups to do great things in our community. I'm seeking to be elected because I want to make a difference. I think that the skills that I have and knowledge-based throughout the years would be a great asset to the city, but also bring a balance of the average citizen. I'm no longer, no better or less than anybody. I'm the average citizen right where I need to be and wanna be, and that's what I'm looking out for everybody. I think there's, there's great things that have already started. There's great policies in place, some that can be readdressed, but I think if we, we move forward collaboratively, I believe Rick's coming in as mayor. I would like to work with him as well, and his group, and whoever may come in as well. I think these are fantastic people here. It takes a lot of fortitude to sit up here to try to do good for the community and yourself, sometimes being bashed for it and misunderstood. It's a tough racket. It's a tough job. Sometimes you have to roll up your sleeves and get to work. That's what we're supposed to do, and it's for the best interest of Newport, and I'm just here to better myself and my community. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I'm Andrew Touche. I've lived in the city here for nine years. I have a lot of experience with operational experience, as long as logistical experience, that I can bring to the table, dealing with budgets, so on and so forth. I also believe that I, you know, affordability is, is huge in overall budget control. Those are a couple of things that I would like to continue to work on. I know the, the current council and mayor have done some great work, but they need, we need to move that forward, continue to push forward, and follow through with, with some of the stuff that has been started, and maybe look at some stuff to revamp. I, I know the, the water and sewer, I, I know that that's a, that's a huge hurdle, but I think that with, with the proper people in place, we can continue to work on that, make that, turn that around as the enterprise fund that it is. And I have, I'm happily married for twenty-one years. I have three children, one grandchild, and I appreciate the support. Thank you, everyone.
Hello, Newport. Thanks for having me. Adam Ortiz, I understand the importance of order of operations, what has to happen, in what order. I understand that if we secure funding for a project, it belongs to only that project, and if you try to use that money for a different project, regardless of how dire or justified it may be, you're not gonna get funding for the next project because your credibility is shot. I understand that local Vermonters are being priced out as they get older and they're not working anymore. The cost of living keeps increasing. I understand what it is to take people that live in the same place and make them neighbors, not just people that live in the same area. I'm happy to be of service, see a need, fill a need. The big one is not to overstep. Stay within my lane. I understand what needs to be done and how it needs to be done. Order of operations, conflict of interest when it comes to green technologies, full disclosure, I'm a stockholder in different green technologies. So as we go green, I didn't pick it because, you understand, I'm getting something out of it. I invested in green technologies way before I ran for office. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Alright. So our first question of the night is, what do you see as the job and duties of the Newport City, of a Newport City Council member, the mayor, and the city manager? I think we're gonna actually take these one at a time. I think that might be easier. So what do you see as the job and duties of the Newport, of a Newport City Council member? We're gonna start with Clark this time.
Two, the first and most important thing is to work with your colleagues, work out any differences. And I've said this the other night, sitting at the table is the easy part. You can only talk to one other person, otherwise you have a quorum and you're breaking law. But I have had conversations with my colleagues and worked out issues, most of them, prior to getting to the, to a meeting. Yes, I'm sorry, what was the next?
What do you see as the job and duties of a council member?
The job and duties of a council member are to represent all citizens, whether they voted for you or not, do everything in the best interest of the citizens, for example, the tax rate, and as Andrew said, our water and sewer mess. If we bring in some experts, I'm sure it can be fixed. We've been inundated with other things when we try to focus on, on one issue. And city manager, is that?
We're just thinking city council member for right now.
The folks are having a hard time hearing in the back.
Okay.
One person.
Alright, so we'll just speak up as we go, go through this question. So, we're gonna start with Carl. Again, what do you see as the job and duties of a Newport City Council member?
Certainly, just like Clark had said, to represent actually the city, but actually the constituents of the city as well, too, to make sure that their, their will, their wants and their needs are taken care of outside of any personal agenda or any business or personal influence. It is all about Newport City, and that's it.
So it's to listen to the people and show, show respect and dignity for the concern, bring the concern forward, and address it as a group, with a group, as, as the council. Work collaboratively with everybody and make sure that things are, are addressed and concerns are addressed, because every, it's very important. Everyone has an opinion. So if you, if you listen and, and address that, that issue or that opinion, talk through it. Communication is key, and I think that, you know, working with that would suffice. Thank you.
The mayor is the CEO of the city, the liaison to the governor's office. The council is, you talk to us, we talk to him. It's a chain of command. The manager, this is what's wrong, fix it. Manage it.
I echo what I've heard for as far as representing our constituents and also collaborating is incredibly key. I guess speaking to the responsibilities more technically and more physically is I receive, we would receive a packet on Friday, and then we have the weekend to divulge and read through it, form questions. On Monday, it's my job to reach out to state agencies or nonprofits or just support groups that might have answers to some of the problems that we face. A lot of what Newport has going on can be seen statewide as far as housing targets and resilience planning and flooding recovery, et cetera. So there are groups that are there to support and answer questions. So that would be part of my job on Monday, and then, yeah, Monday meetings, and then also regularly, or not regularly, opposite, irregular special meetings. So that is also as far as the responsibilities of a council member.
So part two of this question is, what do you see as the job and duties of the mayor? And so we'll start with Carl.
The mayor would be the, what would you call the CEO or the head of the city, but they work with the council. They're a spokesperson, as I understand it, of the council. They break the tie vote, but they also work outside to help bring business, understanding, and information to the council where it can be discussed and voted upon to make sure that Newport is actually represented. They are liaison also to the next question, the city manager, who would, we can pick up from there.
Okay.
So, so the mayor, the mayor's role would be the CEO, so overall responsibility. Obviously, they would, they would have the council for support, and they, they would, they would make sure that everything was, was handed out in time, that we also, that the council was able to get all the information, pertinent information they needed in a timely manner. As far as the city manager goes, the city manager, in my opinion, runs the day-to-day operations of the city, collaborates with the department heads, and addresses the day-to-day, just the overall day-to-day operations. And then they would, obviously, the city manager would report to the council, and then we would take it to the mayor.
When I first started in politics, I thought just because you're right, that means that's what's gonna happen. Whoa, I was so, it doesn't happen just like that. You bring it to the attentions of the powers that be, and there is an order of operations. The mayor is the gatekeeper, understands how to make it happen, or if it's even feasible. So the mayor is the person who is pretty much the gatekeeper, leads by example, and, like I said, the liaison to the governor's office, and is not what needs to be done, but understands how to do it. The manager is the person that is the will of the mayor. Here, go make this happen. This is where the money's coming from. Only use this money for this task.
I also kinda might veer in talking about the city manager as well with this question, but the, oh, thank you, thank you. I might just get closer. The, so the mayor of our city sets the agenda. The mayor of the city works with the council to shape policy that support the city's functions. The city mayor should work really well with the city manager because they need to be communicating on deadlines that are approaching, long-term plan goals, where priorities lie. And so I, it's hard to tease them apart, but I would definitely say that we need a city manager to help with the longevity and the function of our local government. We have seen projects take more than two years, whether it's transportation-related or just grant funding. I think it's really to have a stable, predictable leader, because I kinda break it out, like, the mayor oversees and works with the council, who then represents our residents. So we, the residents can filter up, contact a council member, and then we work with the city council. On the other hand, the mayor oversees the department heads, who then support their staff to efficiently run and operate our city. So I think there's, there's kinda two hierarchies, speaking to what someone else is talking about, but also what is key is the communication between the two.
Thirty seconds.
Alright. Yeah, communication between the two is very key, and I think it would be wise to work towards shifting more responsibilities to a city manager role, because I think it's unreliable to expect a two-year rotation for a mayor to take on that role and for $2,000 a year when it's really a full-time job.
I'll pick up where Carter left off. There, there is a massive amount of time that is needed by the mayor to run the city, and really a full-time job. And we were lucky that our current mayor was semi-retired. She spent a lot of time behind the scenes in the last several months. You can find her almost daily in the council room with a pile of papers, conducting city business. I have seen a lot of documents from our city attorney. There was a discussion by the public about the role of the mayor, and is him or her the CEO? And, and all of the documents that I have seen clearly state that the mayor is the CEO of the city. And I've been fortunate that the mayor shares a lot with me and other members, which we're not blindsided by just hearing about something at a meeting or, or on the fly. So it is important that the mayor represents the city and represents the city well.
Alright, so the third part of that question was, what are the jobs and duties of the city manager? This one, we will start with Andrew.
So the, the job and duties of the city manager would be to work with the department heads, lead the department heads, support the department heads in anything they needed, make sure they have the, the funding, make sure they're, they're aware of where they are with current, their current budget status, make sure they're apprised of anything that may be coming. You know, information should be shared. Again, communication is, is key in, in every role there, and, and I really feel that the city manager runs the day-to-day operations of the city with the oversight from the mayor and council. Thank you.
Chain of command is the mayor tells the city manager, this is a problem, reverse engineer to fix it. This is where the money coming from. Only spend this money for this project. The mayor's the boss, the city manager, reverse engineers makes it happen.
That's it?
One team, one fight.
So to wrap up, I guess the city manager helps, their guiding document and compass is the municipal plan. So that is our goals and our outlines for moving our city forward. So that's really what they're adhering to in their framework. Likewise for the mayor, sorry, I'm kinda going back, but the mayor has the charter, and I know that both of those documents need to be understood and implemented by both parties, but I kinda see one embodying the other. And the city manager, yeah, oversees operations of the department heads. Is there also to support and go through conflicts? And I think that there is a lot of, what's the word I'm looking for? Institutional knowledge within our department heads. We have some really longstanding folks there that know the city through and through, and I would hope that the city manager implores them to keep doing a fantastic job.
We, we have a two or three-page document that identifies the role of the city manager. I don't have it with me. It clearly outlines their job and their duties. They, I believe, are to run the day-to-day operations of the city, working in tandem with all of the department heads. From what I've seen, the massive amount of emails the city manager gets, the phone calls, that's, that's part of their job. Our most recent city manager spent time with each department head, attended some planning and zoning matters, went to some meetings. And like I said, we do have a document. I don't have it, but it, it, it details exactly what their roles and responsibilities are.
Yes, the city manager truly is, in comparison to the mayor, the mayor being the CEO, the city manager is the COO, Chief Operating Officer. And just like everybody alluded to, that they really are the hub of the city. Not only information coming up through the council and through the mayor, but they also, again, are in charge of that city plan, make sure that it is followed through to manage human resources as well, too, with the, the department heads, but also to liaison with the community. They have to filter out the, you know, phone calls and figure things out. That is a, almost sometimes a thankless job. I can't really think of anybody who really appreciated a, a city manager to which full extent. It really is a, a hard job, but they really have all the operations of the city and then report back, and to make sure, and the checks and balances of that is at the council and the mayor, and mayor makes sure that the charter is the, the deciding factor on everything. That's all.
Alright. So the next question is, should you be elected, how would you work with other council members and the mayor? And so this one, we'll start with Adam.
Listen, got two ears and one mouth, so I'll listen twice as much as I talk. If I'm a subject matter expert, take the lead. If I'm not, sport rope. I'm friendly, not familiar. We bump into each other all the time. So just be nice.
If elected, I think I would take a couple months to be listening and asking a lot of questions to kinda learn the ropes from those that have been here before me. I also would serve as a dynamic member of the board, so I would help give insight on some issues, but also be very much have my learning cap on and welcome any insight from the residents or fellows at the table. And I think, yeah, open ears, that, that's, we're here to collaborate. We need to be compassionate also, compassionate learners, so understanding the reason and the emotion behind folks that come with issues, because I think a lot is said at the council, in the council chambers, in the room, during meetings, but trying to get to the root of the issue and understanding the underlying reasons, or, yeah, kinda rambling, but, yeah, I'm not there.
I think I've done it for two years. We don't always agree. Sometimes we agree to disagree. It's, it's all for the city. It's all for the residents, voters, taxpayers, and there have been some very hard decisions. And for the most part, we've all been unanimous. On occasion, split votes, mayor breaking the tie, but it's a challenge. It's not easy, and you just have to do your best, and keep in mind that the residents are our bosses. That's it.
If elected, I will certainly absorb, taking it in. I'm certainly not gonna tout that I know everything. There's things to be learned. It's always gonna be a learning curve, and I don't dare ever to challenge that, that I know more. I don't. And I accept that, and I embrace that. At the same time, I will also learn from, again, like the past council members, but also go to that charter, make sure I understand it, live and breathe it, because every decision-making counts on that in honor for a community act of representation to the citizens and taxpayers of Newport. That's all.
Listen, learn, and respect. You obviously listen to the public, you listen to fellow council members, you listen to the mayor. You learn from mistakes, learn from other people's mistakes, and then you respect everyone, regardless if you disagree or agree. Everyone is entitled to their opinion, and it's a conversation that can be had respectfully. I, I, there, there was a lot of that that I, that I've seen that is not always the case. I, there was a lot of that that I've seen that is not always the case, but I would like to bring that to the table and moving forward, that would be where I would be, and I would help everyone try to make it there. It's not going to be easy, because I had plenty of disagreements before, but at the same time, you have to be respectful and listen to everybody's opinion. Thank you.
Next question is, should you be elected, what is the one thing you would like to accomplish or work on during your next term? And this one, we will start with, back at Carter.
All right. I hear that housing is a huge concern for citizens and also for our future citizens. So I would try to prioritize any initiatives that can, like, again, sustainably, so I'm not shooting for the moon, but again, like incremental changes, whether it's hosting a housing forum, whether it's hosting events where people can learn about incentives about building ADUs in their yard. What tools do we have at our disposal in pursuing and asking questions around that? Because housing is one of those issues that if you don't think about it, then you're really fortunate. But it underpins a lot of our issues in our town. Storefronts are one thing, but if there's not a population to go and visit those establishments, considering our healthcare situation with the hospital, having more folks in town would be helping their pool of people that accidentally have a slip, trip, or fall, but also around housing nurses, because the bottom line for getting traveling nurses is extremely high, and that's now what they're operating under. So if we could have housing opportunities for folks that are educated to come and actually work in those service industries, that would actually pick up a lot, too.
Thirty seconds?
So, yeah. Prioritizing housing for all, all types of housing, too. I know that there's some really good initiatives happen up on the Hill, about almost 100 when they're done, but I think that there is more, we need to do more. There's some solid reports that I think I'm running out of time, but we need to keep growing, and we fortunately have the infrastructure thanks to our wastewater plant to do that.
Clark?
Only one is hard. I'm going to pick the downtown. I guess if elected, I'd like to maybe be a little more involved with the downtown group. There's, we just have started the process of the Tiff District, which I support. The downtown group has done a good job. Some of my constituents lately have had some negative comments about the downtown group because Needlehens is leaving. That has nothing to do with the downtown group. That's because their manager is retiring. Even though Walgreens isn't in the exact downtown, it's a chain store, it's a corporate decision. We've had All About Home come into town. Even though it's not the downtown, I think the business track is a really plus for the city. And I think there's one business that recently left, but my focus is to downtown. That's it.
Carl?
And the full question, please?
Should you be elected, what is one thing you would like to accomplish or work on over the next two years?
I agree the downtown. That is, in my opinion, going to be the most saleable asset of Newport. That is really, when you drive down, that's what everybody will see, and that's what they're going to gauge your community on. They're not going to come into the back roads and stuff and start reversing in. They're going to see it from the downtown out. And if it looks like a disaster zone or a Detroit died-out city, no one's going to come here. So we need to really continue on the efforts that the downtown development are doing, revitalizing, vitalizing, and get this business in here. So I really like the downtown project.
Andrew?
So the first thing I would like to do is bring in qualified people for the vacant positions, one being the city manager and the other being the financial admin assistant, because without staffing, you can't track projects, you can't bring people in without someone there to answer the phone and do the daily jobs that are needed. So if we don't bring in people, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to succeed anywhere if we have vacant positions, because while we have vacant positions, no one is doing that, or the people that are doing it are going to get burned out and want to leave. Thank you.
Adam?
I want to do a lot of things, but if only one thing, then dot every i, cross every t, check every box, order of operations when it comes to securing employment. Students just getting out of high school do not have all their paperwork together or a way to receive direct deposit payments. There's no more checks. Same is true for homeless people, same is true for veterans returning from whatever military service. The reason why military members have a problem readjusting to society is this is the way the world has worked since you left high school up until the time you left the military, and now it doesn't. So this soldier doesn't have an understanding of the way the civilian world works after how long you've been in the military. The high school student doesn't understand the way society navigates because they still live at home, and the same is true for the person who is unhoused for whatever reason. So if you don't have your social security card, birth certificate, photo ID, passport being the strongest, and a way to receive payment for direct deposit, you're not getting a job. I want to do a lot of things, but if there's only one thing, we can't, they can't spend money if they don't have a job to begin with. So order of operations, we got to get these people to work with whatever trade they're qualified for, and if we could bring in a day labor, work today, get paid today, they don't need work two, they don't need money two weeks from now. Go work on a farm, get paid at the end of the day.
Thirty seconds.
Go get Wendy's. Thank you.
All right. Question number four. So the city is facing significant financial challenges, especially in terms of the water and sewer department. What are your thoughts on this issue and what do you see as a solution? And this question starts with Clark.
Well, I've been involved with that. Going to say the same thing as I said last week. I'm the only one that voted no on the most recent water sewer increase, because I believe the method in which it was calculated was flawed. And once again, going to thank Council President Rashawn. He has taken time cards and manually entered them into the computer to come up with what was a really vague number for labor. And I think he has five months of those time cards. And that now gives us a better handle on the labor. There are four employees that work in the water and sewer department, from the sewer plant to the water treatment plant to the reservoir, our current water tower, what will be our new water tower. We have to take into account all of those costs, payment on loans. We need to, really need to bring in a couple of experts. There is one gentleman that lives in the city, that his former job was for Burlington, has a lot of knowledge. We need to sit down with the Public Works Director and get everything and anything that he can contribute to help us, but we need to bring in one, maybe two outside experts to straighten it out.
Thirty seconds?
It's not an easy task, but it's something I look forward to start should I be elected.
Carl?
I, can you?
Yes. So the city is facing significant financial challenges, especially in terms of the water and sewer department. What are your thoughts on this issue and what do you see as a solution?
Certainly, I agree with Clark about bringing experts in. We certainly need to have an outside view on this. But also, as I'm hearing, too, we also have meters that are not working, they're not in, so there's a lot of things to factor in, and again, other costs. And until we have that, we're never going to have accurate data to ever bring this up to an equitable rate for anybody. So I definitely need to research that, bring the experts in.
Okay. Andrew?
We have to really dig in and see, obviously, there's a huge deficit, continues to be a deficit year over year, but I have yet to hear where that deficit is, what is dragging that? What is, so where is that? Why is that? Obviously, we are spending, they're in a deficit for that reason, is they're spending more than they're making, and we need to really dig in there and figure out why. And, you know, I don't want to raise the water and sewer rates, but unfortunately, that may be one of the only steps until we can get out of this deficit, because we can't continue to go into a deficit year over year and think it's okay, because we can't continue to borrow from the line, line of credit to still remain having a deficit. Thank you.
Adam?
Read every single report on the top until my brain hurts and keep reading. Copy and paste orders worked in other municipalities by presenting it to the council and making the decision of the citizens of Newport if you want to go this route. This is what it'll cost. There is not, whenever anything bad happens, no matter what, it's not a pleasant solution that needs to take place. There is no fixing this for free. I understand this, but before I move forward, I need to 100% understand the problem, what has already been tried, because doing the same thing in the same way, expecting a different result will not work. I'm done.
Carter?
So appropriately, this is one of the most contentious and hot topics that I hear from my neighbors. It is one that spans many years back and is kind of going to be one of those ugly truths that we deal with going forward. I want to shout out to those that raised the alarm in the community that identified this issue and followed it through. I also want to praise those that are currently at the table, that began asking questions, that did the diligent work with budgeting and also getting the real data. I think we're at an awkward place, is the best way I can put it, with the metering and kind of like Carl said, is how do we equitably move forward? Because some have meters, some don't, and so applying a rate, it just is awkward. So having to really look at that with all citizens in mind. And I'm also curious, just my, the grant side of my brain is wondering what there is out there, but that's mostly about infrastructure, so I don't necessarily think that that's a real issue, but I just would ask around. Yeah, we still got some progress to make for sure, but I think that we have come quite a way in the last couple of years.
Okay. Next question. So since the last election, there have been ongoing discussions about chain of command and city council members addressing city employees. What are your thoughts on this issue and what are your thoughts on chain of command? And this time, we'll start with Carl.
This specific one was the chain of command and talking to the public?
Chain of command and city council members addressing city employees directly. What are your thoughts on this issue?
Well, as a councilperson, I would definitely want to know what's going on in different departments. I certainly want to talk to them, not only to learn about what's going on in the department, what needs they may have, and how I may be able to help, but also, I've just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. It happens. But that's it, you know, I just leave it at that.
Okay. Andrew?
I believe that everyone should be able to speak to anyone. The chain of command, yes, absolutely, there is a chain of command. However, if someone wants to speak with someone, there may be an expert at something, or they're looking for advice, they look up to the person, dedicated years of service, I can go on, right? But I honestly feel that if that chain of command essentially is in effect, but when it comes to communication, there is no chain of command, because everyone should be involved and they should be able to go talk to people, whomever they would like to get their opinions, and most of those opinions are all valued, right? So regardless of the situation, that chain of command should, there should be no chain of command structure if someone wants to have a civil conversation or get an opinion. Thank you.
Adam?
I never mentioned that I was in the Army. I served Baghdad, Iraq, then full Afghanistan. Yes, I do believe in the chain of command. When you have a conversation pertaining to business for the city, there is a chain of command. If you're just having small talk, that's small talk. But for, if you're on a project, there is an order of operations and there is a chain of command. When you're having a happy whatever holiday, by all means, there is no, I'm too important to be spoken to directly, but when you're on a project, this is the chain of command, order of operations. You don't go over department heads to go get your way. It's called mommy and daddy. I am, I mean it, you're not going to mommy and daddy this. Who, don't do that. I'm sorry, my blood pressure just got up.
All right. Carter?
I definitely hear the reason and the need for a chain of command in most scenarios, especially if, as representing constituents, I don't really necessarily have the right or, yeah, just the assumed right to go after an employee or talk to somebody just based on a complaint from the public. I think, I guess, and I do, like, I would try to uphold the chain of command in certain scenarios, like if there was an inquiry around something on the agenda, or I also might be working with a department head for a grant or something like that, but I would definitely need to loop in the mayor and just letting the city manager know, hey, I'm having a meeting with this person about this topic, just to let them know. I think that that would satisfy the condition, and I think it really also just depends on the topic. So I definitely defer, when representing the general public, to just letting the mayor know, letting the city manager know, and letting it disseminate where it needs to. But I think that there are also special cases where, and therefore appropriate steps to take where I can reach out to an employee to get some business done.
Okay. Clark?
I believe in the chain of command. However, recently, with no city manager, no executive secretary, it hasn't affected me, but sometimes there is a need to speak to a department head. But it puts that employee in a tough situation, because who are they supposed to listen to? You know, there's five of us with the mayor, and I believe in the chain of command. Personally, I had an issue this past summer. I called the city manager. Within 20 minutes, I had a city employee addressing my issue. It worked very well. And it, again, it puts the employee in a tough situation. So city manager worked very well for me.
All right. Transparency has been an ongoing topic over the last few years, going back to the last administration and probably beyond. Would you, yeah. Do you see transparency as a current issue within the council? So that's part A of this question. And we will start with Andrew. And we will start with Andrew.
So, that's a tough question, but I'm going to, it has improved, it still has a lot of work. There still has to be a lot more work to that, because the transparency is 100% of the time. And I feel that depending on the situation, we may get it, you know, 75, 80% of the time, maybe sometimes less, but it needs to be, we need to be 100% transparent, because it's, you know, we work for the public and we have a job to do. And if they, if you expect transparency and want transparency, it's our job, job to do that for you, provide that for you. Thank you.
Adam.
I don't plan to do nothing bad, so there's nothing to hide, so there's no reason for me not to be transparent. On the other side of things, when people say, why didn't you mention, I'll reply with, why didn't you ask?
Yeah, transparency is another topic I hear about and discuss at length with my neighbors. I do not know, it's like a chicken or the egg situation with the table and the public. I have not been here for forever, but I also have been hearing that the amount of executive sessions that the council has been going into, it's basically like a graph that's just recently gone like this. And I know that there are reasons and definitely some discussions that need to happen behind closed doors for a number of reasons. But as far as transparency, I think there's some more that we could do at the table. And I also think that for some of these topics that are really hard to pull apart, that we need to be more transparent and also kind of have a slightly of an education moment and being vulnerable and saying, hey, we've made mistakes in the past, but we're, you know, correcting and we're doing better now, and these are the steps we're taking. I think that, for a number of reasons, folks are hesitant to do that. I am not. I'm very vocal when I make mistakes. And I think that that really opens up the door and would break down the wall between the public interface with the table. If I'm saying, hey, I just got here and I'm going through some numbers, and this is what stands out to me, moving forward, I think we should do this. And even if I'm not right, it's just an idea that's spoken. And then hopefully, I would collaboratively work with the table and also get input from the community. So I would work towards more transparency, absolutely.
I believe the council has been more transparent than in prior years. We can always do better. The amount of executive sessions, that's what I hear from people. What are you doing? We have litigation, we had many personnel matters. While I can't talk about what happened, I can talk about the subject. We had an interim city manager, and then many, many interviews for city manager, fire chief position, our new administrative, fire assistant, all required executive sessions. I wish that it could be more open, but it can't. The public does get to hear in the end, and hopefully, it satisfies them. Some of my constituents do not, they're like, what really happened in there? I'm like, I'm sorry, I can't tell you, but it was, you know, city manager interviews or fire chief interviews. So we can always be more transparent, but I think it's better than in the past.
All right. Carl.
I agree. Transparency is getting better. It has been quite troublesome throughout some administrations, but we're certainly getting there. I believe everybody across the board here agrees that there's an opportunity for us to do better. And if we learn from the mistakes that we make and the mistakes of the past, that's how we're going to do things better. And when the public wants explanations, we can give them as much as, you know, we can. There are certain, again, minute things that should be held behind closed doors, personnel reasons, so on and so forth, but other than that, pretty much all business should be upfront to the taxpaying community. For it is all their business and it affects them. So transparency is paramount to security and trust.
So the second part of this question is, what would you do should you be elected to maintain transparency for yourself and for the entire council? And so this one starts with Adam.
Copy and paste what's already working. If you have questions of me, people bump into me all day, every day, and we make small talk. Whatever is attorney-client privilege, I'm not getting an answer. Sorry your feelings are hurt, but that's the law. Whatever is freedom of information, I have an obligation to be open about it. And I'll meet my obligations.
Great. Carter.
So two parts on how I would advocate and pursue transparency. One, I would own and address any perceived conflicts of interest. I would have to name, when relevant, my employer, or potentially a friend or acquaintance I know that is involved with the project in front of us, whether that's alcohol permit or just renewing the lease for MemSec. I think we live in a small, tight-knit community, and I'm really involved with a number of community groups. And I would just want to make sure that I made that clear and welcome any questions from the community about that. Another piece for transparency is kind of, I guess, hitting on my teacher background. So I think that, like I said earlier, is there is a little bit of, like, when I talk with community members about these hot-button issues, there's a little bit of mistruths and misinformation. And I think that we sometimes need to take a pause and maybe just debrief the town on why we're here, what choices were made to get here, and also what we can do going forward and basically just a more well-rounded approach, and making sure we all have that basis of understanding so that we feel like more of a unified community moving through these really hard topics. So I do not mind getting up in front of a PowerPoint and going through some slides, and I might have to do that for my work. My main kind of talking, how much time do I have?
Thirty-seven seconds.
Okay, so my main job is I'm the municipal energy resilience program coordinator, which means that I help 30, well, okay, 39 municipalities in a region basically improve their infrastructure and making them more energy efficient. And I secured almost a half a million dollar grant for Newport to improve five buildings. So there will be a point where I have to go around the table and walk through some targets and basically goals and where this money would go to. That would be transparent, that would let everybody know what's going on with these funds, and I'm really happy to do that. I actually get quite a bit of joy from teaching, so. Good job.
Clerk.
For the council, we have to reflect upon ourselves once in a while. Put yourself in the position of sitting with the audience, which I do sometimes before a meeting. And as I said earlier, we can always do better. For myself, I think I've been very transparent. It's just the executive session issues that we can't talk about. And conflicts of interest are really important to me, that although a person can move forward, it's important to acknowledge it and, if necessary, recuse themselves. That's it.
Carl.
With self, I've been quite honest about myself and everything about me. There's no better way to actively try to connect with someone unless you understand or know about them. I'm definitely in line with Clerk about, I will talk about anything of city business except for what's behind the closed doors at a legal meeting. And I really have encouraged people to do that. We are supposed to engage with the community. The old days, it used to be, one had the west side, one had the north side, south side, and you talked about those issues, and at the table, you brought them all together and made news, right? Everybody come together. So I really encourage that. Much more town talks. It's your town, you need to talk about it, and you need to address issues. The council meetings are for council business, but the rest is all you. It's your town. Excuse me, city.
Andrew.
I think that with transparency is, becomes the conversations, right? A lot of the perceived transparency comes from, not necessarily just communication, right? The questions are not asked, so they're not given. I also feel that with the conflicts of interest, we live in a very small community. So, and everyone has a conflict somewhere. So like Clerk spoke of, if that presents itself, the person would recuse them from a vote or so on. But I really think that a way to be more transparent is listening and communication, because some of the, maybe some of the lack of transparency is because the right questions were not asked or asked in a certain way. So I think that that would definitely help improve the council moving forward. Thank you.
All right. So we had kind of narrowed it down to seven questions, just based on previous forums and how long they had gone on. So we're actually at the end of those questions. So I'm going to let everybody do their closings and then open it up to folks, and then we still have time, we might have a few more questions to ask. But definitely think it's important that everybody in this room gets a chance to ask the questions that they've got. So we will move on to the closing statements, and so those are three minutes each, and we will start with you, Clerk.
Great. Yeah, so just yesterday, I was working with the select board, and I have had, not had my question, my sanity questioned so much since I was a teacher, and now I'm running for city council. So I was working over at a select board, and they were like, are you crazy? And I was like, no, because they, I am employed and see potential Newport like everybody. But our neighboring communities have dynamic collaborative select boards that effectively run their municipalities, and it can happen. And imparting advice that this person gave to me was that you can't have an agenda, because you work as a team. And so to not alienate yourself, but to make sure that you are working in tandem with the people that were also elected. So I just hope to be a compassionate member of the city council. I hope to, yeah, just remain connected in the community and listening, but also advancing Newport forward with, like, again, regional perspective. And again, just prioritizing our neighbors and also our lake and our beautiful natural resources. I think it can be done. It's not going to be easy, we're going to have to walk and chew gum at the same time, like my mom says, but I think it's very possible.
City manager position, I think we've pushed it back a bit because of the, what will be a new council. That'll be one of the first steps, the first things I want to address, as well as what I call our executive secretary position. And I believe that we need to work closely with Derby. That used to happen when I was on the planning commission, that we would meet a couple times a year. I don't know how many times, but we should reach out to them as a council or the mayor to connect with the, he's not the city manager, town administrator in Derby, and perhaps have a meeting to discuss issues, perspectives, et cetera. I've been here two years, I've done the best I can. We didn't always agree. For the most part, we did, for the betterment of the city. No one sitting here is an opponent of mine, we are all options. And it's up to the voters to decide who is the best option. There could be two new members, or if Rick gets mayor, it's actually three new members, potentially. I think I have the institutional knowledge, foundation and history of the city to keep it moving forward and always invited of new ideas and suggestions. And that's it. Thank you.
Carl.
Certainly, like Clerk, I've been here long enough and have a lot of knowledge in the city. I just wrote down for this some of my bullet points, if you will, here. I think we really need to concentrate on getting the city council stabilized. Within that, we need to deal with communication and cooperative spirit. We're not going to do anything or fix anything unless this is fixed. We need to strive to get, excuse me, we need to strive to get a more qualified, vetted city manager, because without that, we need them to focus on everything so the council can continue on out of business. We just need to roll up our sleeves and begin to tackle our budget and sewer and water rates. It has to be equitable for everybody. We need to encourage business and developers to come and invest in our beautiful city. We also need to find ways to provide housing that is not only affordable, but big enough to raise a family. Housing is crucial to growth, and with growth, we're generally see prosperity in vibrant downtowns and a variety of storefronts. Once they are here, we also need to find ways to keep them here. We need to educate and train our children for jobs. We need to encourage this generation and the next to be a workforce ready and able for today's environment. We need a strong and lasting infrastructure that's enticing and inviting. Developers love to hear that they don't have to spend extra money investing. We need to ensure public safety. Past and recent events have brought us to a new day and a new reality, where we need to be more vigilant, cognitive and aware of our surroundings. And we need to work together in order for that to happen. We need to support our law enforcement on all levels, but especially our dedicated, capable local police departments, our fire department and our ambulance as well. Recreation, we need to have more things for our children to do and more places for them to go. Let's keep our new teen and youth center going. Let's help build it up, a place where the kids want to go. I would love to see the community together and openly discuss city issues, business or whatever. I feel this is important not only to understanding things, but also to be a part of the process. I feel I would make a better, make better decisions on behalf of Newport residents if you're going to interact and talk with them. Things that we're going to have to deal with here are going to be conflict and ethics issues. We're also, yeah, I just believe that we have some policies in place. We need to move forward and certainly work collaboratively. This is a beautiful city, and we need to bring the business and developers in to help strengthen and build their future.
Andrew.
Wow, where do I go from there? No, you know, there's a lot tonight. And I said, I think it was question three or four, one of the first things I would do if elected, I would work to fulfill those vacant positions within the city. I would also reach out to the department heads and see where they are at, where their struggles are, what we can do to help them, because they have lost a lot of their support. And I am not trying to take anything away from the current council, nor the mayor. I just know that with a lack of staff, everyone struggles. And I honestly feel that we need to look at some cost-saving measures. And I'm going to throw that out there, because everybody knows it. The lawyer, legal- Uh, the lawyer legal fees are astronomical and I really think that we need to look to control those in different aspects and I think communication is one of those. Um, obviously, the, the listening, the, the learning and the respect, uh, I think with, with all of that, you can, you can save some costs, uh, that have been occurred. And, uh, I, I also tonight, I would like to thank the, the public for being here and I'd like to thank the candidates. Thank you all for, uh, for being here. It's great and, uh, best of luck to everybody. Thank you.
Adam.
I was instructed not to overpromise and I'd like to explain, I do not mean stealing, but there is a method to my madness and we can keep costs down with the barter system. Every single construction project that has ever been has more materials than they need for the job and there's leftover materials. So, when we go to different events in different parts of Vermont, somebody's just having small talk and says, "Hey, we have extra this, that and the other." If you're willing to come get it, now you save money on tile. So, every single building, excuse me, we build a building and every single bathroom has a different tile. But we got it for free. My nickname is the Michael Jordan of the bumps, it's cause I find a way to make it happen. When we furnished the entire Newport with stuff we got for free off Craigslist, hate me now, thank me later.
Okay. So, we're gonna open this up for questions from the floor and, uh, we'll, we'll continue to circle through everybody and it'll be two minutes. Um, and again, still following the rules that if, if needed, we'll do one-minute rebuttals. Um, Todd's gonna do the mic or are you just?
All good for you guys.
So, we will try to have you guys say it from the floor and then I will re-say it louder if needed. So, we're gonna start with hands up. Okay, and back. Please state your name and also where you're, about where you're from.
Hi, my name's Patrick Curley, I live in Newport.
Your name again?
Patrick Curley. This is kind of a two-part question and they're gonna be controversial and I'd like to hear every candidate's position, whether it's yes or no, I don't really need to hear a long-winded explanation, but, uh, there are two things that I think are like front and center in terms of like obvious opportunities to, to, uh, drive some downtown retail business and to generate, uh, more revenue when it comes to water and sewer. Uh, I'll talk about water and sewer first. How would you feel, candidates, about mandatory mandated, uh, metering? None of this voluntary garbage that, uh, we are just kind of encouraged to do. We gotta meter, our, our bill went up like four bucks, right? But we don't use no much water. I think if there, there's a lot of, a lot more lots, parcels that have commercial water usage, industrial water usages, agricultural water usage, that should be paying a fair share. So, how do you feel about mandated metering? Not yet. And the second question is, for some reason, uh, the city voted to prohibit the establishment of cannabis dispenser retailers in, in Newport City. That business model can allow for a local tax on top of every municipal and state, or on top of a state tax for each sale. So, how would you feel about repealing or at least putting that on the ballot? Adam, hold your hand down, please. Putting that on a ballot to repeal that rule and add a local tax on top of that state tax.
So, we've got two, you had two questions. So, one is how do you feel about mandated metering and two, um, their thoughts on prohibiting, repealing the prohibition on cannabis retail in the city.
With local option tax.
All right. So, we will start with, um, we're gonna, we're gonna go down and we're gonna keep rotating out. So, we're gonna start this question, uh, the first question, we'll start with Clark. So, Clark, the question is, how do you feel about mandated metering?
Yes. When you, when you get your electric bill, it's been metered. When, um, you buy gasoline at the gas station, it's metered. People that live in the city that have, um, natural gas, it's metered. The issue with that is, um, how do you mandate it? Public Works, I believe, keeps a small number of meters. Um, I had, I don't know how many people I've run into that said, "We've called and called and called and we can't get a meter." Or currently, we have an issue with broken meters. And I don't blame Public Works, they're, they're busy. The four guys at the plants are busy. We need to, we need to, uh, discuss this at a meeting and figure out how we're gonna do it, uh, and when. As far as cannabis, um, I don't believe.
We're gonna stick with one question and we'll go back to cannabis.
Water and sewer?
Yep.
Yes. Absolute same, the bullet points, uh, you're metering, uh, the gas, um, the electricity and the usage. If you're getting water from us, uh, we just, you charge it for what you're using. Uh, some people are using less and some people are using more. Um, some people have learned the loopholes, uh, and have really abused, uh, thus far and we need to really tighten it up. So, yes.
Andrew.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, I'm in favor of the meters. Uh, we, we have to come up with a way though to, uh, ensure they're accurate. Um, the life expectancy of, I, I'm not sure about the water meter, but I know that, uh, with some meters, there's a life expectancy of a certain amount of time. Uh, a lot of time is 10 years. Um, sometimes it's, it's more or less. But we have to be able to, uh, watch that and assure that not only are, are we getting, uh, is the city getting paid comparable for what is being used, but in the same token, the consumer is not being overcharged as well. So, I, yes, absolutely, I'm figuring that out.
Adam.
I've been an advanced help, uh, an advanced helper in every single construction trade. I am not a plumber, but I do know that meters do exist. Leaving from where the water comes from, it then splits off, meter again, it then meter on that block, it then meter in the house. I do not know enough about it. I need to read it, I need to read it, I need to read it, talk with plumbers and why are we having more water leaving this vein than that vein? Do we have a, a crack in one of the pipes? Until, I will not speak until I have all the facts, but I know that it can be metered before it even gets to the house and we know how much water is going onto that block. So, yes, meters, but I need to know everything before I make a decision on it. And I have not seen the plants and talked with something matter expert plumbers on the topic.
Carter.
I seem to agree with most folks at this table. Uh, I think metering is in our future. I think it would help, especially a mandate specifically would help stabilize that awkwardness I was talking about earlier. Um, but I would also wanna make sure that we have proper supports, supplies and staff to implement this and adequate time for the community to understand why we're moving forward in that direction. Um, it reminds me of when the state said, "Hey, everybody has to do composting, period." Without like community support, it, people just are throwing it in their trash cans. You know, there's no enforcement. I mean, around this area or this topic, there's a little bit, but I still would wanna make sure that everybody understood the process around water and sewer rates and why metering is an effective tool to bring everybody up to par, especially as the question asker brought up, is there's different industries, right? There's like private homes and commercial use and then talking about the different rates that would apply to each because we don't wanna be dinging businesses that are stimulating our economy and, but also we need to be looking at actual data, um, and metering is one way to do, is the accurate way to do that.
Okay. So, the second question was, um, how do you feel about repealing cannabis, uh, the rule against cannabis retail and, um, with the local option tax? And so, this question, we'll start with Carl.
That's a, that's a, wow. That's, without knowing, I'd like to know a little bit more about what, what Derby is doing. Um, I've seen they have a couple, um, that seem to be successful and, um, that may be a great option for tax. Um, the times are changing, folks. Um, we need to stay with it and a lot of our citizens use cannabis. Um, that's their right. Um, if they don't have access to it, um, or, excuse me, if we allow access to it, that tax money will come to us. So, it's kind of a win-win. It's, they're right and it's our opportunity to get a good tax source.
Okay. Andrew.
I, I am in support of that. Um, I, I do know that, um, Derby is very successful with theirs. I've talked to numerous people there, uh, to include some business owners. Um, and I, I also, I, I look at the, uh, the state, uh, with how they do it with the tobacco and that sort of thing and the amount of money that that generates. And I look at the potential that, that Patrick had spoke of with, with a local tax and look at that as extra revenue that can be generated. And at the end of the day, we can all be thankful for that if, if that comes to fruition, but I, I most certainly support that.
Adam.
Adam Ortiz, 420 friendly, 100% yes. The thing is, 100% yes. Uh, gray area, we wanna keep, I live here, I eat here. We wanna keep Newport PG rated. So, the part of the cannabis culture could be geared towards, uh, doggy treats, kitty, with the CBD. People spend more money on their pets than their children. So, there's definitely money to be made. There's, uh, nexus of, there's thousands and thousands of pounds of unprocessed hemp. The money is not in the flower, the money's in the processing. And if we get it, uh, get on the processing, distill it, et cetera, that makes more money than the flower. We could take everybody else's overstock at the end of the season and just process it.
I don't like it.
No pressure. You bring a bake pan to grandma's house and she's making the brownie, she has more business.
So, my understanding when Newport had this restriction, pretty much a lot of municipalities across the state in 2019 were asked, "Hey, this, if we're gonna pass this statewide, what do you guys wanna do?" Trying to implore and empower communities to make that choice themselves. I think our demographics and also the education and awareness around cannabis has shifted greatly. Um, and I think we can look at our neighbors and see the success there, at least with the local operation tax.
What did you call it, Pat?
The local, I don't know.
Local options.
Local options, not operations, thank you. Um, and so, I would entertain this for sure because it could help with a couple empty storefronts, but I also would want to know what measures the council could take to prevent, um, a proliferation. Uh, my community back out West, they, uh, similar, but unfortunately uncontrolled developments. So, basically any time a storefront in my town went down, uh, headshot went up. And it's like funny, but then it like kinda stinks. So, I would look into, before bringing it to the community on the ballot, look into what measures we could do to instill and prevent that from happening, but also allowing our local businesses. Also, it's an agriculture product that's grown in Vermont, um, and I don't know.
30 seconds?
Yeah. So, I think it's, oh, one of those products that's grown here. You know, you know your farmer. If you don't know your farmer, then you go to the store. And, um, if folks just have to drive like two miles up the hill to get it, I don't see why we would prevent, um, a business from establishing in Newport.
Clark.
So, no and yes. When I was on the planning commission, the council at the time, um, did not want it. Um, we did a bylaw that would not allow it. It's, it's federally illegal. However, um, whoever said something about, "Look at what Derby's doing," um, I'm, I have open ears. Um, if someone wants to be put on the agenda to discuss it, all they have to do is contact the mayor and I will listen to what they have to say.
Carl. Yeah, we started with you with this, not right? Yeah.
Yeah, but I can finish.
No, sorry. I was looking at the wrong question. So, uh, more questions from the floor.
How are you around Newport City? So, Andrew, you mentioned, uh, at one point about the legal fees and the amount of money that we're spending on lawyers. And I wanna backtrack that to what I believe is, has been a rise in, uh, filings for public records requests and other things that have been required for the council to go to our lawyers. I know that the thought is, if there is no response, you know, that we shouldn't have to talk to the lawyers about it, the council can make their own decision or just no response at all, that that means a yes to the filing. So, there's a lot of different things here. I guess my question is, how do we end that type of, um, what I think is a disrespect to the council and, uh, just a disproportionate amount of time that, that the council is spending in, in, uh, the lawyer fees for that type of, for that type of question?
So, so you're asking, how would the council end?
Be an inordinate amount of public records requests and, and, uh, get back to business.
Running it down because I have to restate it. So, one second. Give us an extra second. All right. And so, this question, we will start with Andrew. So, Andrew, um, yeah, how would the, the council address the inordinate amount of public records requests and get back to business?
So, with the, with, it's a great question and I'm glad, I'm glad that question came. Um, because I, I strongly feel that with a new council or potentially most of a new council, um, when, when Rick takes membership, uh, if elected, um, the council will be, you know, all new, uh, or mostly new, excuse me. And I would like to think that there was a reset, right? I, I know the past is the past and I mentioned this before, but the personal vendettas need to go away. Um, everybody needs to reset and everybody is entitled to their opinion. However, it's a conversation. It's not a threat. It's not a, it's not a, "I'm gonna get one leg up on somebody, I'm gonna get this person, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that." There's, we have to stop that. We have to work together. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be successful in any, in any line of business, never mind the city business, if we're constantly fighting or arguing or disagreeing and, and making threats or public records requests on every item that is, that is discussed. Uh, and when I, when I mean that, Steve, it was, it was for everything, right? Yeah, I mean, there, there are several different, um, factors that that is in, it's, in my opinion, it's unnecessary. And I know, I know there's a lot of, um, members of the, of the public that feel the same way because I've heard that numerous times, you know? When we take a cost and it's astronomical because of, um, some public record, a lot of public records request or a personal vendetta, um, in multiple ways, multiple facets, um, arguments, um, it's, it's only hurting the public. And, and that's, that's me as well. And I don't wanna be the, the burden of, of that. That's, that's, thank you.
Adam.
I call these people that side of the family. No matter, every family has that side of the family, no matter what you do, they're just miserable. So, the way you handle petty people, you don't take the high ground, you take the low ground. How much does it cost to fight it? Spam these people. Every time there's anything, send it ahead of time till it's junk mail, till your freaking mailbox doesn't have room anymore. Oh, you want, okay, no problem, here you go. So, passive aggressiveness. You wanna be petty? Haha, you came to the right place. Hard target, soft target. You're gonna not want a dollar anymore. Oh, I'm serious. Okay. You wanna get my blood pressure up? Haha, that goes both ways.
Carter.
Yeah, I think this illustrates how different on the table you are. Um, I, I think that, oh goodness, a lot of, hmm, let me start this. One, I think it's key to remain calm and understand. a lot of, hmm, let me start this. One, I think it's key to remain calm and understanding that when people have questions or, uh, have doubt on what is being done at the table, to actually listen with integrity. I think some, uh, recent things that were raised were actually completely valid, and the council heard them and changed course specifically on being bonded around, um, charter, what's dictated in the charter. So sometimes their voices in the room are trying to speak with that in their hand. Um, and I think going back to the transparency and being honest and being vulnerable and saying, this is how we got here, righting some of those wrongs openly, publicly, will quell some of that upset that the community feels because they have been behind, for whatever reason, um, feeling like they have not been included in this public, uh, government. So I would try to approach it. Um, I cannot control what somebody does and doesn't request, but I think that forging a collaborative, open board, table, sorry, um, I forget how to select words, but having an open city council would really help, um, bridge that gap and hopefully narrow down those public requests. And frankly, there are lawsuits.
Ten seconds?
Ten?
He's thirty.
Okay. Um, there are lawsuits that are happening that span the current, um, hullabaloo, I guess. Um, there's one that is still being pursued by the ALCU, and that happened many years ago. Um, so we have to have lawyers, and there is gonna always be a fee. But I think working with those constituents is gonna be part of the hard task ahead of us. Um, but I really do think that changing our tune and being more open-minded of the board will help.
Okay, uh, Clark?
Having been here for two years, I can tell you that, um, we are at about fifty thousand dollars plus, um, in the fiscal year for public records requests, open meeting law violations. Doesn't include the time that we spend in, in, in executive session, sometimes, uh, in our, in our meetings. Can only hope that it will diminish, but I can tell you, I have seen as many as twelve emails in a week of open meeting law violations and public records requests. You can expect one or two a week. This week I've seen, the end of last week and up to today, I've seen four. Um, has those, those requests have to be answered in a certain way, usually, uh, by, uh, an attorney? And I would, I have engaged with this small group in public and in private, and it does, I, I would hope that it would've worked, but it doesn't. And, um, I, 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 I hope it goes away in the near future. I don't see that happening.
Carl?
Yeah, I, I, I do not see that going away, no time soon. Um, but within that, um, we just talked about a few things, uh, that, that involve people's personal rights. Whether they're right, wrong, or indifferent, any person has a right to file a complaint and a court. That's their right. Um, I don't, I'm not sure where you can stop that, but again, as Carter was going to, if we can address a lot of the issues and strive to live up to the expectations of our community, I dare to say we would alleviate a lot of that. Um, now, on some people's personal agendas and vendettas, that may be taking effect, and that may, with a change, uh, that may lighten the load a little bit. Um, but there's always going to be a dissenter, always going to be someone trying to find something wrong. And that's when we put on our big shield of Newport armor and, and suck it up, butt up, and do it for the city. Um, that's who we're here for, that's, that's, that's it.
Um, so I know that you've been raising your hand, but is it a rebuttal to something, or is it just more comment?
If we legalize marijuana, they'll chill out.
All right, uh, next question.
Can, any of you give me a better idea of what is included as a public record?
Certain question, um?
For instance, um, because of the state of mayor and council and public interactions over the last two years, early par, I started instead of raising questions in the council meeting, I wrote letters. Are my letters considered a public record?
So what is considered a public record? Would letters to individual council members be public record?
Of the, of the public to the council members, because I was trying not to say, not, not to bring up difficult matters that could not be answered right away in front of a, a hostile public. So I wrote letters and hoped that eventually the council and/or mayor would think about what the issues were and would not answer me specifically, but say, we're looking into this.
So what is considered a public record in our letters from the public to individual council members? Public record? Yes, they are. So Adam, go ahead.
If you dial nine one one and don't want your identity identified, they're not gonna say who called. If you write a personal letter?
Just stop you there.
Okay.
Because they transfer you to dispatch and dispatch knows.
If you write me a letter, you write me a letter, and you don't want me to say your letter's from, you understand? That's personal letter to me. So, no, I'm not gonna say, look at what she's writing to people. I think it's where I'm at.
So if I said, uh, directed the letter to mayor so-and-so, that's a public record?
Yes.
If I don't use the title, like councilman or mayor, it's not a public record?
So I am gonna ask you the question, are you sending it to their, um?
If, if it's personal or business?
Okay.
So I, I guess I, I'm.
So I'm gonna, we'll go through the table and then we might come back to this. So, Carter?
Um, I would consult Vermont City Leagues and Towns. They have an incredible staff of legal help. Um, I'm sure there is a technical definition. What, wait, hang on. What's your name?
Claire.
Claire, okay. That's your Claire. Um, so if you're a resident of Newport and I'm at the table, that would be considered because that's a communication, whether it's an email, letter, text, anything of like that would definitely fall in that category. I don't know how far it extends around, um, documents from anything from like related to projects or personnel. I, I think there is definitely a line, and I don't know that, but I will look into and ask my contacts at the LCT.
Clark?
Claire, I have enjoyed your letter so much. I've read them two or three times, and my answer is yes, they are a public record. What you don't realize that you've guessed done is by the time I get home, I'll have an email for a public records request while I go away. But yes, I consider it a public document.
I also would agree, um, because once you assume the role as, uh, uh, the councilman, um, you are public. Uh, so any interaction thereof, and that would be an ethic issue, which we all should've been just trained on it, when we addressed things like that as well too, personal friends, so on and so forth. You have to be careful with that. It's the best interest of Newport.
I'm sorry, the last?
Always in the best interest of Newport. So anything that's provided to the council would be considered a public record. That transparency.
Andrew?
Yes, um, anything that is sent to a councilman or, or lady would be a, uh, public record. My, I guess I have a question for you. If it was directed to one, why wouldn't you direct it to all?
I started to give copies of the letter to everyone at the table, which included a city manager, if there was one, and included the clerk treasurer. Then it got to the point where I would, well, I was starting to do this because I didn't want the mayor and the council to feel attacked in public, because two years ago, that's what they felt like. So I was trying to voice my concerns, but not do it in a way that would embarrass or put the, the council or the mayor, you know, on the chopping block. I didn't want to do that. So I wrote letters, and I did not expect any specific answer to me or to anybody else. Basically was just saying, these are the things I'm concerned about. And I would even use the phrase, um, tell us as much as you can, whenever you can, understanding confidentiality.
So everybody's kind of answered their, their stance on it, but yes, anything that goes to a council member or a public official, um, and especially elected officials, even if it's in their personal email, if it addresses anything to do with their duties, um, must be turned over at least to a lawyer who would then say, yes, this can be kept or this can't be kept. And that's everything from text messages to audio recordings to video, um, handwritten letters, any mail that they receive, it's everything. Um, so it's, 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 yeah, the, there's a pretty defined role that they can have. But something like that could be handed to a, if you don't say anything about a public, um, it could be handed to a lawyer. A lawyer could say, this doesn't qualify.
Because I have been approached, because since with what Mr. Clark Curtis says about, um, seeing an envelope on the table and saying, I wonder where this came from, haha. Well, all right, they always knew, although I was always the first one there, and they didn't know.
So I'm gonna, I am gonna move on just because there are questions.
But I have been approached.
Okay.
When people know that there's been left.
So we're gonna, we are gonna move on. We, we're gonna have a lot of questions.
Have written letters to the mayor. Do you keep copies of them?
We're gonna skip the question. So, any other questions?
Mine too.
Any other questions from the audience? Oh, yes. Yes, sir.
Well, I would like, uh, I would like to know, um, particularly what, what's happening in the light of what's happened at the federal level in grants and with all the funds, uh, to municipalities or to, uh, sanctuary cities and all that. What the, we're gonna have to get more creative, uh, with, uh, getting funding for the different studies, uh, and programs, um, that we want to implement, as well as funding for building things and programs that need to be done. I would like the candidates to explain what grant-writing experiences each of them have had and are, um, and administering those grants once they come. That makes sure that what we got the grant for, that it gets spent for that. And that, it requires a lot of.
What is your name, sir?
Matt.
All right. So the question is, uh, with everything coming down the federal level, from the federal level, um, and having to be more creative in the future, what are your experiences with grant-writing and administering, uh, grant funding once it comes? And Carter, we will start with you on this one.
Um, so I currently started as a grant writer and administrator with, through NVDA. That stands for Northeastern Vermont Development Association. That is an RPC. That is a regional planning commission. So I'm very familiar with all the acronyms and the alphabet soup because I think somebody up here said it. I really like that. Um, and I also do work in tandem with Newport to deliver a couple grants, um, that, one of them being the playground improvement projects and then also a wayfinding planning grant. Um, there's, the word is unknown. What's gonna shake out from the federal grant, but I can tell you, it really just depends on the sourcing of the funding. If it's state-funded, it's fairly protected, although every agency I've talked with always says like ninety-nine percent certainty. Um, and, but the implications of that, we are still figuring out, I think this week or I guess within the last week. Um, I love the thrift store that we have, Seymour, um, and that's having to close its doors because it's federal funding. I know transportation is gonna be seriously impacted, so, um, road improvement projects. And also our neighbors that rely on, um, gravel for their dirt roads. We're really fortunate, we have paved roads, but those take a different level of upkeep and, um, coordination with different state agencies and therein. So it is complex because often we go to the state and the state's like, oh, yep, great, you're making, you're meeting these conditions, here you go. Um, but now the state is realizing that funding sources are changing. So it is more than ever gonna have to be leaning in and collaborating and being transparent about what funds we can rely on, um, but making intentional steps forward and kind of trying to navigate those things together. And also being patient, because it is just gonna be changing. Um, I hope that we can, I guess, on a, a non-national level, ask to stop, um, a lot of these freezings because it affects so many parts of our economy. Also, our agriculture is gonna be affected, um, and our food system, which I deeply care about. So.
Clark?
My answer is zero experience with grant writing. And, I don't know, a couple of months ago, we hired a grants manager. Well, we took our zoning assessing person and gave him another job. And Frank Cheney has done a marvelous job. He did not just applying for grants. You have to manage the grants. There's a ton of paperwork that goes along with it. And it wasn't being done well or at all, at all, by our former city manager. So Mr. Cheney stepped in. Some cases had to start over from the beginning, uh, including what Carter's working on with, uh, some of the playground. And, um, he's done a great job up to date. Um, we had a cash flow issue in the city. And the reason we had a cash flow issue is the, the proper paperwork wasn't being submitted uh, so that we could, we could in turn get our money back. So, um, I have zero, but Mr. Cheney is doing a marvelous job.
I too have, uh, no, uh, hands-on experience in grant writing. I understand, uh, that, and I also agree that Frank Cheney is, is really great at what he's doing, um, he's filing these grants. And also a lot of times with grant writing, you, you get to write your own salary net sometimes as well too, um, which is a bonus. Um, but yeah, certainly, um, you have to have a fundamental understanding of what the grant writing is, um, and what it can achieve. Uh, but I also understand there are timelines, like Carter was saying, that, that we missed some timelines and missed out on great opportunities for money. Um, so if we have someone like Frank in, in place and in position, who is on that, making sure we are filing the right paperwork in a timely manner, we'll get those funds, if, if we can do qualified for.
Andrew?
So I have minimal grant writing experience. I have assisted with gathering information to help in the grant writing process. Um, and I, I do know, uh, that, that Frank is currently doing that. I, one thing I'd like to do is sit down with Frank, um, so I can have a better understanding of what exactly needs to be managed and how that is managed, how he does what he does. Because, um, we, we wanna know he's successful. We, we hear what he's saying as far as following up on grants and, and the timelines and the processes. Unfortunately, I'm not, uh, knowledgeable enough to feel comfortable knowing that everything is being done at a hundred percent the way it's supposed to be, without sitting down with him and having a better understanding, letting him explain, uh, exactly how it works, what he's doing, the timelines, uh, and, and what is required. Thank you.
Adam?
Vermont Public Library has an online course on grant writing. I completed it. I have never done a grant. I've applied and applied and applied. So you need the experience to get the job, you need the job to get the experience. I'm not married, I have no children. I'm not married, I have no children, I become whatever job I'm doing at the time. So one hundred percent to me will be the job.
Other questions? Patrick?
How far down your priority list is finding a city manager?
See, you need fill in these.
This is Clark.
Um, as I said earlier, it is on, on my notes right in front of me, it's number one.
Carl?
And next in line, it's number two on mine. Uh, mine was getting the city council stabilized, but, uh, to strive to get a qualified and vetted city manager, that is really personally due to that. Get the process started as we're dealing with these other things, because it's gonna take a while to define an appropriate city manager, uh, but we definitely need the process started, uh, and get that going. It is absolutely priority one into.
Just for the record, I answered that question first, and I said, that was priority of mine, um, unlike some, but, uh, no, the vacant positions are the first priority, because without the vacant positions, there's nobody to do those, and you're gonna burn out the people that you're asking to do more, that can't currently do their assigned job. Thank you.
What he said.
Okay, and Carter?
Um, I definitely agree with the folks at the table here. I think before we run out for a job posting for city manager, we need to get a few fairs in order and stabilize and come together as a city council, reconstructing the responsibilities and the job description of that manager. And then, because frankly, anybody qualified and will, I don't know if they'd be willing to work with, um, Newport in its current state, um, I think they would wanna see a little bit more responsive and a collaborative, uh, city council before signing on, so I hope that we could make some steps in that direction. And yeah, speaking to what Andy's saying about burning out the folks is, I work with Frank closely on a number of grants and, um, we talk frequently, and, uh, and, grant, it's a lot of work, there's a lot of paperwork deadlines. Um, I'm currently managing thirty-nine grants from Merck across our region, um, and there's just deadlines, and it just depends on the capacity. So if somebody on, at the table doesn't mind lending their experience or, um, knowledge around this topic and helping the city manager, but ultimately, I would hope that we could employ somebody that would take over the majority of those tasks and responsibilities, because again, fluidly, having somebody that has that municipal plans, lining up those goals and actually executing them, uh, because I, and/or the mayor is only a two-year position, so I'd want somebody that's more in the, um, in the operations to actually see it through, because often grants, you, you, they're exciting and you apply for it, but my goodness, it's a process, and to actually implement them and then close them out can take a minute. So, um, yeah, well, ideally, I would like to see a, see a city manager helping on that front.
Okay. Next question? Anybody else? Yeah.
Have you all read the city charter? And is that a document that you're prepared to follow?
Alright, so we start with Carl.
Yes.
Yes to both parts?
Yes, and yes. That is required, really, to expand on that. As a city council, actually, as a resident, we should understand this charter, but it's more especially at the council, we should understand it, because that's the driving force, that is the law of the land of our, of our city. So yeah, yes and yes.
Yes, um, I have read, I, I believe I have a, a clear understanding of all of it, and I accept the responsibility to follow.
Adam?
No, I have not, but it's the rulebook and I follow the rules.
Yes and yes. And I like how you phrase that, Andy, like it's your responsibility. I will frequently reference that when I need to. And Clark?
Yes, it's right here. And I've read it, and I reread it on occasion, um, when we have, um, like the CEO, who is the CEO of the city? This is actually gray, but we have, as I said earlier, um, attorneys telling us what it says, that's their job. You could read it a hundred times, you're not gonna remember everything in there, but whenever a issue arises, here it is, it's always with me. And, um, full notes and highlights, and, and it, and it helps. When you feel a bit askew sometimes, read this, it'll straighten you right up.
Okay. Just trying to see where I started, so it's hard to call, so, anybody else have any more questions?
Is there a part, can I have a part two?
Yes.
Now, I know you've all read the city charter, have you read the part that describes the role of the city manager? Because if you have, it will tell you that it can't be reworked, how are you going to handle that?
You mean the description can't, the job description can't be reworked?
Yeah, it's in there.
So, uh, this will start with Andrew.
That's the job that's very clearly defined.
So Andrew?
So, so, it, it, the current, uh, job description of the, the city manager is not, is not the same as the city charter. It was not, the one that was posted online was not. So, so there's, there's some vague, vague things there, like Clark said, it's, there's a gray area. There's, there's things that the, uh, city manager is going to be responsible for, and there's things that, uh, better describe it within the charter. However, there's, there's a lot of gray data within the description, um, with that. So if you read the job description that, I'm trying to think, when it was, when it was posted, um, prior to Jonathan, when, when Jonathan was hired, the job description was very, it was, it was good, but it, but it differed from that. It was not verbiage, the verbiage was different. So, um, it's all in how you interpret that. Um, obviously, you try, you follow the charter, but the job description can be more descriptive and have additional assignments. It's not held to
Thirty-seven.
The charter. With, with everything, it, there's more to it, there's more job description, um, and things that they can do, meaning, uh, it's, it's just vague, and it's a gray, it's a gray area, but we would, we would obviously work to, um, to improve that.
Adam?
What is required to navigate society keeps changing of jobs. Um, there was a time where, I'll use the military, we had swords and shields, then rifles, and now we, things keep changing. Same is true for every other job. So what the city manager would be required to do two hundred years ago, a hundred years ago, fifty years ago, fifty years from now, is gonna keep changing as society changes.
So how would you navigate that with a charter that says specific roles?
We adapt with the current situation at the time. There was a time where this typewriter was cutting-edge technology. So if the city manager's job has changed, then we change the city manager's job.
But if you have a charter that's a legal document, are you saying, work to change the charter?
We may amend it.
Make policies? So you're saying amend the charter?
Yeah.
Alright, Carter?
I think that's a really good question, because how did we operate as a city for so long with a city manager if it was against the charter? And I, similar but different standard thought is, we have other larger municipalities in our region that operate with a city manager at the helm. Um, I'm looking at St. John's Berry, I'm looking at a town manager in Linden, um, with larger populations, and therefore, large, like, yeah, again, department heads and things that are a little bit more complicated when you have, when we're really lucky to have fire hydrants, just in case our houses catch on fire, somebody is responsible for those, and ultimately, there are bills to pay, and it gets a little complicated. Um, so over time, I think that the, that role has evolved, and so either attuning our charter might be appropriate, and that would be appealing all the way up to the state, and that's a really lengthy process. Again, I, I'm not entirely sure, I don't know. I will probably have to bug the LCT again, get them on the phone, um, or do a little emailing, uh, and try to figure out what is the most stable way forward, because what I'm hearing from municipal staff, what I'm hearing from my constituents, is that they long for that type of, of, um, government again. Um, but how to, again, bridge that gap between a charter that was written long ago and where we're at right now?
Clark?
Let me tell you what I've experienced. So those gray, it does define the city manager's job. And those gray areas are filled in by our attorneys. And every time I hear the word city attorney, I don't know how many of them there are, there is a big firm of them. And we have a very great lady, um, named Marilyn Mahusky, who, um, focuses on labor. She helped write the current city manager job description with the mayor. So she has her law license on the line, and the, uh, job description that we have or what may be posted online, uh, is what, uh, the mayor and her legal team, uh, came up with. So that, that gray area is filled in by some city attorney.
Okay. Carl?
Basically, um, the times are newer. Adam actually kind of touched base a little bit, that with, since its inception, um, the times have changed, uh, different scopes, uh, the scope of the job has changed, more duties have been added on to it. Uh, our job as a council is to address that and/or readdress into the charter, uh, through that in the bylines. Um, that's how you make effective change, and that's how you address issues like that and get them solidified to take away the gray areas, so the interpretation is equal, right, equilaterally through the board. Um, there's not a different interpretation, everybody's on the same sheet of music. So, uh, certainly the council needs to, as a whole, talk about it, look at the charter, address it, each particular issue, and this issue, and break it down to its simplest, most basic foundation, and, and we can assign that to the city manager. But we definitely have to bring it up to it a little bit, for sure.
Any other questions?
People mention grants, uh, and so what I've observed happening is, sometimes, um, the police department or another entity, uh, within the city, um, needs certain thing, guns, let's say, or whatever the item might be. Um, and, um, they say how much it costs, and, uh, the city, the citizens, um, fund through, uh, accepting the budget amount, those guns. And then, along comes a grant, I'm not saying that, uh, guns typically are part of grants, I'm just using that as an example. Uh, along comes a grant, and it says, we will pay the twenty thousand dollars or whatever, uh, that you needed for, uh, buying those grants, and in fact, buying those guns, and in fact, that twenty thousand dollar grant money buys the guns. I always feel there's no accounting for the, what happened to the twenty thousand dollars the citizens agreed to pay to buy those guns. Do you, um, have a, a concept of, um, accounting, getting, uh, a place to put money, uh, that has been promised to be paid by the citizens and is paid through our taxes, and duplicated by a grant? What should happen to that money, and how should there be an accounting for it?
So your question is, um, trying to work this, uh, question far, but, so your question is, um, do they have an idea of what should be done when money is budgeted for a specific thing that will be grant matched? And how you will account for that money and how it's eventually used?
It, it's not matched, it's actually duplicated.
Okay, so, so say you set aside money, but then a grant was gotten, so what happens to that pool of money that didn't need to be spent?
Alright, that's one of the.
Okay, so, alright, so this will start with Adam. So the question is, what is your sense of what should be done, um, when money has been set aside in the budget? But a grant now covers it, how do you account for that money that has been set aside? And what happens to it?
Preferably, we have a CPA as a next city manager to account for all the money. Now, if the money was set aside, then it has, uh, been paid for by grant money, it just gets reallocated to some other purpose. It gets back in the coffers, to be voted on, to be used for something else.
So, uh, as far as accounting for it, though, how do you show how that was accounted for? Just putting it back into the budget, or should it be held to the side?
Put it back in the budget.
Okay. Carter?
So around budgeting for grants, if it was a, if it was a byline for grants or to get equipment, let's just say equipment, not just guns, but say, and because those guns are in the city police department, so maybe an equipment upgrade. If a grant was to be covered, then you could maybe leverage those funds to pursue other grants. Sometimes grants require matches, um, so if you could maybe turn that twenty K, not just get the guns that you got paid for, but maybe get some shields or other equipment that is needed. I would think it probably would stay in the department, because how I see the budget laid out, it's very much compartmentalized like that, um, but I would ultimately defer to any policy that the city has on duplicative line items, because that is definitely a thing that can happen, especially with grants. If you start to double dip, the state will figure it out, especially you don't want the feds figuring that out. So it's very much, um, seconding what I'm hearing at the table is having a city manager at top and overlooking all of our budgets, but then leverage that, and I think it should roughly stay in those departments. Does that answer your question, Thor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Clark?
So I'm also the, um, liaison to zoning assessing, and I also get Frank, our grant writer, because he's all three. And he tells me that the chief of police doesn't need any help with grants, that he does an awesome job. So grants, you don't get the money, you, you get a grant, and you, for whatever amount of money, and you said guns, and Carter said equipment, whatever it is, um, he would get that equipment or guns, and pay for it, because it's in his budget. And then, the proper paperwork is filled out, and then, there's the money back. I believe we have a policy regarding that, but Travis would come to us and say, I've got a grant for twenty thousand, but we need, uh, cameras, but they're sixty, but I'd like to buy twenty thousand dollars worth of cameras. That, that could be a real scenario, and, and we would move forward from there. And we, we can decide yes or no. That's it.
Carl?
Yeah, same lines there, um, 'cause first of all, it was identified and it was pulled from a source, the money had to come from somewhere. So wherever that money came from, I would dare to say you won't want to bring it back to its source, or if not into a general fund, but certainly, like Clark was saying, if that money was there and still could be used, reappropriate it for another line item within, within that, so.
Uh, if, if that was the case and that did happen, I feel as though the department head, they would be responsible for that, for that ask, would bring it to the council, at which point, um, to, to Clark's reference, I'm sure that they would have other viable stuff that they would wanna purchase, um, for that money, at which point, the At which point the council would, would listen to the, uh, department head and agree or disagree if it was already, um, you know, if it was, if it was already earmarked and, and costed. If not, um, there, you know, I, I'm sure they would, it would go, uh, be set aside and then reallocated at some point in the future after it's been reviewed.
All right, any other questions? So one thing that I did, uh, want to ask of you, um, this was kind of brought up a little bit was, um, do you support a local options tax? So I think that came up a couple of times, but nobody really touched on that. So this will start with Carter.
So is this applied broadly to all businesses or food services?
So typically a local options tax, tax is, uh, applied either as a sales tax or sales in meals or it could be just meals. So it depends on your, on your description, but it's normally covered under anything which falls in, any business that falls in the city. That's, um, services, I wouldn't count.
My first, my first, uh, reaction is a broad application like that, I am unsure about. I just don't know the numbers. It is ringing to me a kind of like a resort tax. So in certain towns that have amenities and draw a lot of tourism, that helps float, um, the locals as far as like the infrastructure to support. So I know that that can be helpful. Um, I know that right now, we are not, uh, one of our main, uh, drivers for tourism are Canadians and they're not too happy and they're not crossing the border super willingly. So if they learn that Newport has this extra tax on top, I'm, I'm, I'm just, that's my first thing I'm feeling. But I just need to do some more research and numbers and see again, what other municipalities are doing. Is it working and what is that, those funds going towards? If it's a specific, um, project, maybe, maybe the, um, municipality, maybe the constituents would be around that saying, oh, we're raising funds for this development or something like that. But right now a broad and general tax, I'm not, I'm hearing the opposite from my neighbors that they want more taxes.
Okay. Clark?
Williston has a one percent town tax, but it's a whole different world down there. Supported by manufacturing, uh, and all kinds of business eateries. The answer is no, we are taxed to death as it is. Property taxes are higher than I would like, but the, the simple answer is no, I do not support that.
Carter?
Yeah, were, were we specific to the one question that asked that?
No, I, no, this question is more broad. Do you support a local options tax?
Uh, no, absolutely not. On that one subject, I would have, it would have, but no.
And Andrew?
I do not support that.
And Adam?
No, people are already getting priced up. They don't have money now and you take more money away?
Any other questions in the room? And then, uh, another question, um, was, so statewide, short-term rentals have come up a lot in combination with housing. So, um, the short-term rental market is comprised of seasonal and full-time residences. Sometimes people second homes, sometimes extra properties, mother-in-law apartments, um, and can also be, you know, just rooms in your house. So at the state level, there's been lots of discussion about banning short-term rentals if they are not within your living residence or a seasonal camp. There's also many towns that are now having them registered or taxed. What are your thoughts on, I think I had to answer the, the one that says a question, but what are your thoughts on how Newport should deal with short-term rentals within the city? And this will start with Clark.
I haven't read our zoning bylaw in a while, but it addresses it. You know, when I was there, there was some language, we had a, quite a debate about Airbnbs. People were concerned that someone was there for a weekend or a week. You had to live in your home in order to, you could do it, but you had to live there. I, I honestly don't know the answer as to where we currently stand with the bylaw. I will tell you that the, um, the bylaw has been rewritten, the planning commission, zoning administrator had a tremendous job in rewriting the bylaw. There was, it was supposed to be presented to us, um, but due to constant legal issues, public records requests, the review by the city attorneys has been pushed back. But, so I don't know what it says now and I don't know what it's going to say. But thank you because I'm gonna, I'm gonna look that up.
Carter?
Um, I, I'm going to defer to Andrew. I do not have an answer to that. I will educate myself on that, but, um, that is actually really the question. I don't have enough information that would do the service.
So I don't have all the answers with that either. However, I would like to say with those, um, currently with our, with our state of the housing affairs, we need those. A perfect example are the nurses that help at the hospital. Without those currently, um, we wouldn't have, they would, the, the current staff at the hospital wouldn't have the support they have. So I would, that, that's currently what I have to say about the, these second homes or rental facilities. But I would research that and do more research on it. Thank you.
Adam?
I believe we should leave these people alone and instead of vilifying them from having a successful business, brand-new, old-looking houses to keep the vibe of the different neighborhoods. Vermont is a brand. They come here because they want to have a vibe or an experience. Well, we can have brand-new technology that looks old, but they look around and wow, look at this place. So the answer isn't to vilify successful businesses rather than make brand-new, old-looking buildings. So we have more housing. It's the way the building looks that's the problem.
Okay. Carter?
Thanks. From what I understand and what I've seen from the Vermont Housing Report, um, short-term rentals are not impacting Orleans County significantly. Um, instead, I see them actually serving as a way to help families with the side income. Uh, they kind of speak into like, when people come, wow, like maybe that actually is maybe turning in some short-term visitors into long-term visitors. Um, and also it's part of the tourism economy. So they're, they come to recreate, they come and shop and they come and eat. Um, so anything that helps people have that authentic feeling. Um, and again, I have not seen the numbers that they are negatively impacting our housing stock. And when we're talking about housing developments that are receiving state and federal funding, whether it's rural edge, whether it's, you know, you building an ADU in your backyard and getting forty K for it, you, there are stipulations on that. You cannot turn it into a short-term rental. It becomes housing for, and often, um, there are conditions for the folks that are occupying those houses. So that you are encouraging, um, service workers, you are, uh, yeah, so with those other developments. So I do not, I do not see bringing that to the table. But again, if somebody presents with other data and other opinions, I will hear it and I am able to change my mind. But for now, I'm, I'm not interested.
Okay. Uh, another question was, um, so we keep talking about housing in the city and the lack of it and, um, the city plan came out and there's a lot of options for housing within that. But what can the council actually do to help support and further projects when it comes to housing projects which are typically development? So we will start with Carter.
How can a council help support housing projects? Certainly, um, get as much data, uh, and education on, on that as possible. Identify groups or, or, um, nonprofits who specialize in housing. Um, use that as a source. Offer any, uh, financial support, um, that they, that they can, uh, put towards the projects. Sure, sure, answer.
Andrew?
So, uh, we need to work with developers, um, to, uh, work as far as, you know, ease the process of, of permitting, um, you know, the cost of, of everything. Work with them to try to help them, you know, make them want to, to build apartment buildings, make them want to be an asset to the community. And in doing so, um, I think it would just, it would start, if we, if we could do that with a few different developers, and I know there's a couple of projects going now, but if we can, if people start, when people start seeing that happen and people coming in and the apartments and, and the buildings filling up and that's just gonna, it's gonna breathe, uh, fresh air to everyone and they're gonna see it and I, I truly believe that it's gonna continue to, to drive the growth process because they'll see the success that it's having and, uh, will go nowhere but up. So I, I honestly feel that we can just work with developers to ease the burden for the permit processes and so on to help bring, uh, housing to the area.
Adam?
I am not gonna overpromise. When the dust clears, then we find out where the money is and for what. What was and what is has changed. There was available. When the dust clears, we'll have a better picture and understanding what funding is available for which projects. Focus on those projects. Once those projects are successful, we have credibility for the next project. But we can't get to two before we finish one. We have houses that are abandoned that can be winterized and rented out to local Newport residences here, go stay here. We have abandoned buildings. Um, if we own them, then let's winterize them and rent them out. But as for bigger projects, that's all up in the air until the dust clears and there's a clear understanding of what funding is available. So I will not overpromise. Do I understand that a five hundred dollar studio can be in the same exact building as a five thousand dollar penthouse? Yes, I do, because who's gonna work for the guy who pays five thousand a month rent? The, the guy who's paying five hundred a month rent? We need housing for the working class and we need housing for people that are ready to retire and they want to live comfortable.
Okay, Carter?
So a couple of answers to this question. I think most importantly, what I'm hearing about around development, um, so Act one eighty-one just got passed last year and that was the state's attempt to kind of work with municipalities and repeat, not repeal, but a little bit walk back Act two fifty. If you know Act two fifty and you're a developer, or you're a developer, you know what I'm talking about. But basically it lays out the land and the process is you have to go through in order to start a development. So Act one eighty-one, there are now tiers. And so a downtown develop, like a downtown, um, community like we have this designation, we are able to get a tier one A status. What does that mean, Carter? That basically means that it, we don't have to have all of the regulations, but in order to do that, we have to have revised land planning maps and then also more support around zoning. So do, does Newport have the capacity to make those changes? Maybe. Is that something at the table that we would want to pursue and encourage? Yes, um, that allows, that's the kind of easing the lift on the developer. Another thing that I really like doing is event planning and, um, having, uh, looking at neighbors that are doing this is their housing forms. Is there a way that, again, the municipality, I'm sorry, Newport would sponsor and have a bunch of nonprofits? Or does local agencies come in and deliver, um, tools or basically equip locals that either need help transitioning into permanent housing? Maybe they're stuck in rental and they don't have, they don't have the financial assistance or, um, ability to do that. But there are groups abound that are there to equip. Um, we're talking about our housing stock. They're really old, beautiful farmhouses, but they're pre nineteen forty, so they need a lot of work. There are agencies and groups that can help refurbish those and grant funds for that. Um, and just in general awareness around what folks that do currently have housing, what they have available to them to help our local, um, grand list grow.
Okay, time. All right, Clark?
Um, grants and zoning. So where rewritten zoning bylaws have made it much more applicant-friendly, for someone that wants to build or, or add on to their property. That's the zoning. Grant, uh, private developer with a million dollar in grant funds and a lot of their own money over off of, um, Jackson and Stone Ball Street, created lots already, including the entire infrastructure, water, sewer lines, stormwater is all done. And in fact, they, they paved the road, um, this fall. It's ready, um, for new homes. I did have a conversation with a developer and, um, the state was, uh, all these swales and stormwater runoff. It doesn't look anything like the, the, the coexisting neighborhood. But, uh, my short answer is zoning and, and grants. And I think, I think the city was a co-accomitant on the, on the stormwater. So, um, that's how we've helped or could have.
All right, so along the same vein, what can, uh, the council do to help create a more vibrant downtown? There were changes made to use for the downtown buildings, but these are privately owned buildings in most cases. Um, so what could the council do to help revitalize downtown? And this will start with Andrew.
So, uh, you, you communicate, listen to, um, the, the building owners, property owners to figure out what, what is needed. There's a lot of buildings downtown that are moving ready. There's a lot of buildings that need a lot of work. First, we need to find out where, where they're struggling and what we can do to help them. Um, prior to, we can, we can offer, you know, the council can offer any kind of assistance that is needed. But unless we know what that is, what, what is needed, it's not, it's not a, one, one shoe fits everyone. It's, everyone is, is different with what their needs are and, and where they're at. Are they, is it, is the building moving ready or does it need work? Can, you know, somebody move in tomorrow or is it a, is it a three-month project? Or, you know, so until we really find out and, and talk with the landowners and building owners, property managers, so on, we really, um, can offer, you know, we can be open to suggestions and, and offer our suggestions and, and assistance when we find out what the needs are.
Okay, Adam?
Um, more business means more people, so we gotta have more PG-rated recreational events. Um, we have a lot of Vermont authors. We can have book signings at the library, the different holidays, milk them for what they're worth. Valentine's Day, people buy candy. Halloween, we have everybody that has the, whoever wants to hand out candy, line them up on Main Street. On Halloween, Halloween, not trick-or-treat. Everybody can dress up and we have more events to bring people in. We just had a retro gaming guy, the guy who's the champion of Tekken, which is a video game, drives a Lamborghini, there's money to be made. He drives a Lamborghini for playing video games. So there's money to be made on PG-rated recreation at different times. You bring people in, they got PG-rated fun, they spend their money, they eat, they drink, they go home. Welcome to Newport.
Carter?
So to reiterate, the question is, what can the council do to support downtown businesses and just generally revive revitalization efforts? Yeah, okay. Um, definitely, and in support NDD, they are multifaceted in their approaches and committees to helping boost all sorts of, um, tiers that really help our downtown. Um, I'm just involved on the events committee, but just having things and organizing. I mean, talking about book signing is last year we organized a, as part of the organization effort around Forge Fest. So that brings people in from all over. We had Canadians, we had people come up from southern Vermont, never been. had people come up from southern Vermont, never been to Newport before. So leaning into what we've got basically, we've got this gorgeous lake, I'm hearing recreation and family events are such a pull. And then just generally around supporting businesses, I think we need to talk with them, I think the sewer rate is gonna come up, but I also think that as the more we expand our grand list, the more we have folks in town that are shopping and providing business to these storefronts, the better they're gonna do. Some of them are in way more decrepit conditions, I'm thinking of the Newbury Building and it's gonna take more effort. And that's also gonna take an open-minded council to approve or at least consider motions being made to help pursue those efforts. Yeah.
Carter.
Our current mayor, I believe, visited many businesses along Main Street. I don't know what became of that. Our development lot across the street, we're pursuing with Newport Downtown, a Tiff District, which I wholeheartedly support. It'll take time, but there'll be buildings there someday. I think of the Newbury's building, I heard, I don't know for a fact, that it's not in the best condition. But perhaps the city could invite the owner and see, just pick their brain what they want to do. It may end up having to be demolished, I'm not sure. But I was reading something lately where towns and cities are making the owners do something with these buildings instead of them just sitting there. And it's not only Newport, it's a national issue. So what I just said, I really support the Tiff District, existing businesses that have endured highs and lows, they're still here. And I'll have to ask the current mayor what became of her visits, but that's it in a nutshell, I guess.
Yeah, I agree with the Tiff District, I really support that. And as I identified, we all know, we drive up and down Main Street, we look at these buildings, folks there are used up and they're decrepit change. When the owner uses it as far as they can use it until they can no longer get insurance or anything and now they want to sell it and want someone to come in and pay top dollar for a building, they can't even begin to use it. So that is a real dissuade really, so we need to really find ways, again, to help perhaps maybe a beautification order, you know, you've got to keep a, what do you call it, facade, you know, of our downtown district. We have to, a certain look. There's definitely, I've talked to Rick in downtown development, there's assistance in educating, classes to get grants and so forth, if you guys help write and teach. There's stuff like that. The ways to entice businesses to come in and say, if you spend money here, help develop our downtown, we can offer potentially tax deferments for a set amount of times to let them come in, spend that money, get it all set and ready and then start pursuing business and get patronage. So that's where we need to support.
Okay.
And I have to use the bathroom.
Okay, all right folks, that's it, that's all we had. Thank you all for coming. Enjoy the rest of your evening.